Welcome to the November 19th, 2019 Gilderlin School Board Meeting. Please silence your cell phones and rise for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we have on the agenda, high school representatives.
Hi, I'm Savannah Adamy. So quarter one has ended and we're on to quarter two. And fall sports are over. The high school football varsity team got defeated by Shen on November 8th. And winter sports have begun. The musical this year is Chicago. And the fall play was two weekends ago and it was really successful. On Monday, November 25th is the eighth grade choir concert at 7:30 in the high school auditorium. And No Place For Hate launched two Thursdays ago and all students signed a pledge.
Thank you very much. Next, we have public comment. I think we have two people signed up for public comments. So first, we'll have Olivia Mayer. Oh, yeah. So it's Esteban Arango?
My name is Olivia Mayer and I'm in the sixth grade at Farnsworth Middle School. The reason I am here today is I believe that we should have art longer than 10 weeks in an entire school year. I loved art so much this year and I was devastated when I heard we only had it for 10 weeks and then I had to wait until seventh grade. And my art teacher, Mr. Pico, told us that we get better at art with practice, yet we have art for such a short time. I'm Esteban Casaviano Arango, as you know. And I'm here today to respectfully ask you to consider to add another session of art classes during the school year instead of having it just for 10 weeks. One session only is not enough. I know a lot of people that would love to have a second session of art classes. I'm not suggesting that we should have art twice in a row, but have them twice in a year. This way, the teachers can make new ideas and students can enjoy new techniques and learn about artists as much as I do. Also, I think that we don't need two sessions of technology when we have so much screen time already throughout the day. This may just be me, but whenever I look at a screen for a long time, I get a headache in one night. And when that happens, I don't do my best work. Please consider this option for the benefit of the students who, like me, love art. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to have a little switch in the agenda. First, we'll have the program report and then we'll go to budget development. So I will, is it right, or to Damian?
Sure, Damian, go ahead.
So, yeah, we're very excited tonight. We have a presentation from our high school business department and our middle school fax department. They're going to talk to us a little bit about the CTE program. You heard a little bit about this back in August when we shared with you some new courses that had been presented to the state education department for their approval. And we have since received that approval. So I welcome Shannon Elliott, I think, where are you, Shannon? Oh, she's way over there. So Shannon Elliott is the instructional administrator for both the high school and the middle school departments and she will lead us through the presentation.
Okay, can you hear me? First of all, a great shout out to the very articulate art students from Farnsworth. Wow, I'm so impressed. I'm the supervisor for art also. We're delighted, and when I say we, you're going to meet everyone, but we're delighted to present to you information about how we provide support, enact CTE, both at the high school in the business courses and also at the middle school with the Family and Consumer Sciences program. So I'm going to ask people to introduce themselves because they can tell you who they are and where they teach and we can maybe go in order. So tonight, we have Michelle Dos. You have to stand and say who you are in your teacher voice. Thanks.
I'm Sarah Hubbard, I'm a business teacher at the high school as well.
I'm Joan McGrath and I'm a business teacher at the high school as well and also work-based learning coordinator.
I'm Kate Doogan, also a business teacher at the high school.
I'm Mark Millen, I'm the TA and the business department.
We're in the faculty, Family and Consumer Science at FMS.
And Kathy Senmerdin, Family and Consumer Science at FMS.
So we brought the whole mishpaka, as they say. Including, I hope you notice, just one of our really hardworking TAs who really helped make all of this happen. Okay, next slide, please. Oh, I have to do everything?
That was yesterday.
All right. So just a little refresher, that the business department went through a process to get CTE programs approved. We did a self-study, we had external reviews, and we brought it before you and you approved them and our superintendent did as well. And we were just notified, very recently, that the state has approved them. So everything is golden. So thank you with that. Our next slide, I'm going to ask, oh, I'm sorry, Ree. Oh, my goodness, would you come up?
I'll introduce myself.
Yes, I'm going to ask Ree Pasilico to introduce herself. And I'm sorry, sorry to leave you off the first slide.
That's okay, that's all right. And you can turn to the next, good, okay. Hi, I'm Ree Pasilico, Rosa Ree Pasilico, and I'm Capital Region Team Associate for the CTE Technical Assistance Center of New York. And I have been working with these wonderful business teachers and with Shannon for about a year. Our first meeting was November 5th of last year. So we are really thrilled that we got three programs approved. And I tell you, they're just the best. So anyway, but I started at Shaker High School. I was there for 20 years as a fax teacher. Then I was at Shen as an administrator, head of K-12 Health and Family and Consumer Sciences. And then I finished the first chapter of my life at Burn Hills, Boston Lake, where I was the K-12 Director of Health Education, Business, Technology, Family and Consumer Sciences, and I did the internship program. So the last thing I did before I left Burn Hills was I did an approved program. So I love helping these great educators in the Capital Region help to get their programs approved. Shannon asked me to talk about this slide a little bit. Basically, the programs that have been approved, and they're going to go into some more detail, it was marketing and accounting and the business management and entrepreneurship. And basically, the board of region sees a high-quality CTE program as one that has been approved. And that's because of the college credit-bearing courses that are part of it, work-based learning that has to be part of it, an industry-based, nationally-recognized technical assessment, and some other really high-quality experiences for kids. So sometimes, people even say that a student who's gone through one of these approved programs is the definition of college and career-ready. College-ready because they have taken a college course, they've met the entry-level competencies, and career-ready because the industry-based nationally-recognized technical assessment is written for people to be able to go into an entry-level job in a specific career field. So the kids that go through these pathways are really going to have a competitive advantage. And that's what one of the benefits that's listed last. It doesn't matter whether they're going to college, post-secondary training, or right-to-work, they will have the competitive advantage, even those that are going for a part-time job, because of all of the opportunities they're going to have in this approved program. Although, most of the students in their classes will still be taking courses for different reasons, electives, but then there'll be that pathway, those kids that want to really pursue these careers. The way that the approved program fits into the graduation pathway is in order to get a CTE graduation pathway, you have to go through an approved program with all of those things that I just talked about. So basically, students are getting a high academic achievement, Port Region says, a region's diploma, advanced region's diploma. They still have to meet all of the requirements for a region's diploma and they're getting this high-quality career and technical education training, okay, from a high-quality CTE program. So it's like the best of both worlds, no matter whether they're going into an accounting career, if they're going to go into a business management, or whatever. So is that okay? Did I go with the time limit?
Yes.
Okay, good. She threatened me with my watch.
That's not true. Okay. And now I'm going to ask Sarah Hubbard to come up and talk about this course.
So we have the three programs of study, accounting and finance. And I'm just going to click through to the, yeah, business management, entrepreneurship, as well as marketing. So those would be our three program areas of study. And this is a really nice summary of each of those, highlighting the courses that some of the pathways have in common, which would include the career and financial management and quite a few courses that are available for college and the high school credit, which is something our department is very proud of. As you can see down on the bottom, those would be the total for each pathway that a student could walk out of Gilderlin High School with those college and the high school courses under their belt. So it really gives them an advantage when they go to any higher learning institution at any point in their life, right? They don't have to walk out of the high school and go right into higher education, but if they choose to at a later time, these credits are highly transferable. So one class that I just want to highlight really quick is financial literacy. And since we're asking for things tonight, such as more art, I would love to have financial literacy classes required for graduations. Throwing that out there. Thank you, thank you. And tonight, we also got personal finances, brand-new for this year. That is approved for college and the high school credit through Hudson Valley. So not only can it fulfill the graduation requirement for economics, it can fulfill that requirement, it now is also available for three college and the high school credits. So you can just take a look at the choices, right, that are here, depending on the programs of study. And everything is concluding with some type of work experience, internship program, which Joan and I both do internships here. And what a great time that is in a student's life to be able to get a glimpse of their career before they spend thousands of dollars to decide that that's not what they want to do. So internship closing and concluding with an internship experience of some type is highly important.
Thank you. So obviously, the pathways thing is really awesome and we're very excited about that. But we're doing some really awesome things on a day-to-day basis as well. And I think we do a really excellent job of making our content real for our students. So some of the things that we do are listed here. I mean, most of us have sat in job interviews and you don't know the terror that comes with that until you actually do it. So, you know, providing students with an opportunity to practice interviews with people who aren't their teacher and their classmates simulates that a little bit. Similarly, you don't really feel the terror of making stock decisions until you're faced with buying or selling when the stock market does something crazy. All right, so we've been able to send students to pretty cool stock competition, hosted by Junior Achievement on the SUNY Albany campus. Creating business plans and pitching them, again, to people who aren't their teachers and classmates, just giving them some real-life experiences. I'd like to particularly highlight the Hello Water cooler that's pictured on the slide here. My marketing class worked with a company called Hello Water, they're based out of Chicago. And basically, we worked with that company to make some of our marketing projects more real. Everything that the kids did, they interacted with the owners on. And it culminated in us pitching to the school store to get Hello Water available for sale. And now it is available for sale in the school store. And this year, we're working with a company called Rez to do something similar. So we're just really able to get our students actively participating in their learning. Textbooks and notes certainly have their place, but you can't run away from the experiences. So we're giving them those as well.
Let's see, oh, nope, wrong one. What did I press? There we go, got it. So when we talk about financial literacy, I feel like it falls under, it's like a pop word when you watch a show and people say, "Oh, there's a pop of color." That's what I feel like the word "financial literacy" means, when really, we're talking more and we're talking about a financial education, a personal finance education. And under that personal finance education comes financial literacy. Because right now, we're looking and we're speaking to Generation Z, right? And they are looking at jobs, they're looking at money, they're looking at careers, interests, in a whole new light that we haven't seen before. So rather than just when we talk about personal or finance, I think people think, "Oh, you know, okay, checkbooks, you know, and bank accounts," but it's so much more. Because students these days, we don't have that tangible, touchable money. You know, they're not physically giving somebody $15 and getting their $3 change. They're pressing a button on their phone. They're transferring money via Venmo or PayPal, you know, everything is right there. So we have to expand what we're doing in the classroom as well to meet their needs and be more real in their world. And that's what we're doing in these. So when we talk about it, we're not just, we're teaching about, you know, different economic and financial strategies, retirement ideas, general economics, how to open a business, what to consider, different saving and investing options. Because we're going to have some students that are going to go to college, they're going to get student loans. What does that do? What does that do to your budget, to your long-term life plans? And maybe they're not doing that. Maybe they're going to rent an apartment right away and how does that look? So we're really talking to a broad group here. And what we're trying to do in all of these classes and what I think we do a really good job of continuing to work to do is addressing every student's need there and making sure that they're all leaving our classrooms with this lifelong skill and information going forward. Because these 16-year-olds, they're entrepreneurs, whether we want them to be or not. And they're seeing, you know, the Instagram and the Facebook and they're watching people, you know, sell their last year's boots for $50. And their access to money is very different. You know, if they want a babysitting job, they just download an app and up their profile and then they have a job. So we're also very aware of their access to money being much more valuable, you know, it's right there, it's there. And again, it's not somebody handing it to them. "I know I have two little kids at home, if I can Venmo my babysitter and I don't have to remember to go to the bank, life's a lot better." And they like it, too. So in going into this Generation Z and into this next generation in classes, what we're really looking at is this personal finance education being this much bigger, broader, more important topic at a much younger age. So, and they know, too, I say, you know, whether you're investing in real estate or you're a physician and you're looking to open your own business and are you going to build or are you going to lease, you know? What are we going to do here? And that's really, especially with all of this work-based living and our access to technology in this school with Google Hangouts. We can bring in business owners from Chicago. You know, I know Mrs. Hubbard's brother-in-law has five restaurants in Colorado that is very much a big part of it. So we're bringing in, whether it's the local community, I very much work within the local community, bringing those people in. It's a huge, important aspect to these kids' lives and what we're bringing to our students every day. And then again, just as Michelle said, you know, the notes and the textbooks certainly have their place because you have to build that foundation. And once we have that foundation and that core, then we can move forward in all of these other classes of finance, the career and money management, the vocational skills and careers. But again, we're looking at this in a much more broad, bigger light now because of just how the world and how our community and how our school is changing. And it's a fun place to be and to be the first ones to kind of really introduce them and open their lives to it because their eyes kind of change, they're like, huh, oh, okay, you know, and they never think about it. And to see their brain really start working, it's fun, it's awesome. So that's a lot what we're doing there, the essential life skill, as you can see at the top. And that's it.
So some of the other things that we do. We talk about work-based learning and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a couple of slides, so I'm going to put that on hold for a second. We've done a lot over the years with Job Shadow, Job Shadow Experiences, where we'll bring students out into workplaces and give them an opportunity to learn about a whole business and then all the different parts that make that business really function and operate. So we give them an opportunity to go out into Job Shadow Experiences. We're also going into a new phase where we're bringing some career experiences into the school for other disciplines. So for instance, in December coming up, we have a series of different speakers in the healthcare profession. So our science classes, we've opened it up so that the science teachers can offer an opportunity to their students to meet with some folks relating to all different types of healthcare careers and professions and learn about them and learn about different scholarships that students might be able to apply for and things of that sort. So we're looking to do a lot more with that, even with our tech people. I was out at a conference last week related to STEAM and met a whole bunch of different people relating to different tech industries and businesses in the Capital District and made some great connections and people willing and wanting to either have our kids go out there or them come in here. So some Job Shadow Experiences are certainly really awesome. As Sarah mentioned, we have up to 22 college credit offerings within the business department. That's more than a whole semester's worth of college. And that breaks down to real dollars for both the student and the family and really can shorten up their amount of time to go to college, shorten the amount of money that they spend, and also provide them with additional opportunities, maybe to double major, maybe to do a semester abroad, maybe to graduate early and start working on their masters. I'm taking advantage of that through my son, who will graduate with his masters, I mean, pardon me, his bachelor's in accounting, double minoring in computer science and financial and finance in three years from Binghamton, and he'll have his masters in his fourth year. So it's like, you know, it's a boom. And he took a lot of courses here in our business department and throughout the school. We have lots of college courses. We also have two school-based enterprises here within our department that we've essentially adopted or created, our school store and our garden, which we began our garden last spring and literally, it has blossomed into a club now. And I'm going to let Mark talk a little bit more because he was very instrumental in getting that up and running this past year. Truly, we couldn't have done it without him. And then we have two other really great opportunities for our students across the school, but certainly, a lot of our business students are involved with the Investing Club, where they learn about investing in businesses, in the stock market, learn a lot about financial literacy and the importance of having a good, solid foundation of savings before you go out and do a little bit more risky stuff with investing. They are currently participating in stock market competition online through the Ithaca College. And we're also participating in internal competition through the club at school. And then in the spring, we will go out again to the Capital District Stock Market Competition that is sponsored by Junior Achievement over at the SEFQ. And then lastly, we're heavily involved, especially Sarah, with our Sources of Strength organization, which provides, you know, basically, a foundation for students to build positive connections between peers and, you know, adults to help them establish good, healthy choices in their lives. And, let's see, I'm going to turn it over to Mark.
So just to go back over what we talked about, one of the new things we did last year that I was a part of in my first year working for Gilderlin was the garden. And it was awesome to see the students really enjoy seeing actually where their food comes from. Because a lot of these kids, they go to Hannaford or Price Chopper for their food and they don't actually know you can grow tomatoes in your garden, you can grow peppers. And as you can see, we really, from these pictures, we actually had a really good harvest this year. And we honestly started kind of late. So this upcoming year, we get to get a head start and really excited to see what we can do. It's a real good opportunity for the students. And also, the school store, we've talked about it today also, we use the water, for example, the Hello Water was used throughout the business department and now we're selling it and we have a partnership with that company. And it's also an awesome learning experience for the students to actually take a job-like scenario, whether it be cashing people out, stocking shelves, doing inventory. And it allows the students to have a less stressful introduction to working. With a hands-on approach from all of the teachers and faculty, it really eases them into their potential careers. So, thank you.
Yes, and we sold lots of vegetables. And our one little baby cantaloupe, you can see down there. Not sure, that was supposed to be a pumpkin, but clearly was not. So, talking a little bit more about our work-based learning. We have three different components to our work-based learning programs. Our first is our Career Exploration Internship Program, which is a non-paid career exploration for students. They go out into a workplace or a career area that they're interested in pursuing and it gives them an opportunity to explore and learn if that is truly a career that they would like to go into sometime in the future. And both Sarah and I, when we teach the course, we really go out there with the students and we say, like, it's really a win whether you decide you like that career or you don't. Because if you don't, then it's your opportunity, before you go and invest a lot of money and time and resources and effort, to go into a career that maybe you don't end up really liking after you have a chance to dip your toes in. But for other students, it's really a time where they get convicted about what they're interested, what they think they're interested in pursuing. And then they go off to college and they really know and they can be that much more engaged and taking ownership for their learning from the get-go. Then we also have our Work Experience Program, which is 150 hours. And that's for students who either already have a job or are on the cusp or looking for a job. And what our focus here with this particular program is to help students learn about some of the softer skills, the interpersonal skills, the communication skills, that they may not really have an opportunity to embrace other, you know, really before they go out into the workplace. So these are some of the things that the employers are saying, that students are coming out of school that they really don't have a good grasp of. And so that's what we really focus on in that particular program. And then lastly, we have the School-to-Work Program, which is an internal and external community-based supported employment program. It's for students who need maybe a little bit of support to really be work-ready. And so we provide those supports by, you know, sending them out to the workplaces with a job code. with a job coach. We start all of the students here in school with, um, different jobs within the school. One of those jobs was, was, um, helping us to start the garden. Another job is in the school store. And in the school store, that's a really great learning lab, if you will, for the students to get exposure to working with all of those financial skills, as well as the inventory and interpersonal skills. They really learn so many interpersonal skills being in the store and helping people and answering questions. And, um, and then, um, in the store also, one of the things that we're working on is trying to work with other clubs and groups and organizations across the school to help promote or sell their stuff. So, for instance, we just had a meeting today with, uh, folks from the National Honor Society. Kids come into the store all the time and they're looking for different products, school paraphernalia and different things, and, um, they've been asking for sweatshirts. And so, the National Honor Society wants to sell sweatshirts through the school store. And so, that's perfect. That's exactly what we're there for. The kids are helping to design the sweatshirt and pick out what they want, and they're gonna go put, put up signs and help sell it and promote it. And that's really what it's all about, helping us to help the kids get real-world experiences and, and learn from them. So, I'm gonna turn it over.
We're going to talk about the Family and Consumer Science Courses that we do at Farnsworth. Our program is sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and each student takes 10 weeks of FACS, that's the shortened name of it, in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And they are in a rotation with other special areas such as art and technology, et cetera. In sixth grade, our students do a sewing unit and complete a project. They also do a unit on food preparation, which would include kitchen safety, food safety, measuring accurately, following a recipe, working cooperatively in a lab group to produce that recipe, um, and so on. And then the final unit in sixth grade is child development, where students learn about the ages and stages of children. We talk about babysitting and child safety. Whoops, yeah, I accidentally bumped that. Got it?
Okay, you do.
Yeah. Thank you, sorry. In seventh grade, um, our program builds on the sixth-grade program. So, we do another unit on sewing, and this time the project is a little more complicated and builds on what they learned in sixth grade. We do the food unit, and in seventh grade, we, um, add a unit on nutrition. So, they learn about nutrients, they learn about, um, how to choose food that is healthy, how to improve, um, their day-to-day feeling better, thinking better, all aspects of that based on the food choices they make. And then, um, after seventh grade, they move on to eighth grade.
That's me.
Yes.
Okay. So, in eighth grade is really where we start looking at what they might wanna be when they're kind of all grown up. This is where they start to focus on where their priorities are, where their interests are, and really explore themselves and, and where they see themselves going in, in the future and, and what they expect to do. With that, they will complete a Job Shadow Experience. So, like we said, every student in eighth grade gets to have an opportunity to Job Shadow. For Job Shadow in eighth grade, this is like the one thing that kids are so excited about in cooking. They like to cook in sixth and seventh grade. When we say, "No cooking," they go, "Job Shadow, yay." Okay? So, they get really excited about Job Shadow. Job Shadow is an opportunity for them to go out and to see, what is it like? If I wanna be a veterinarian, what is it gonna be like when I'm actually there all day long? If I'm sitting there for five hours, what does it look like on the other side? And with that Job Shadow, then they also will interview the individual that they're going to be Job Shadowing, and so they have questions that they have to ask. So, they're learning, again, about interviewing skills and all those types of things. And then they come back, they do a big share, and some observations that they have to, would they really wanna be in that job? Do they want to, you know, do that as, as they think about it? And, um, some of our students will just go with their parents, which is fine, and they go, "Even if I'm not really interested in that, I'm still seeing what it's like to work, looking at a different lens, not looking from, as a child, looking from, as a, as a worker." So, those are two major ones, and here we have some former students. This student was with a software developer in Troy, and the other student is sitting at Judge O'Connor, one of the justices in Albany County in Supreme Court. And Judge O'Connor has been on our list for many, many years. I started here in 2002, and we have a list of possible mentors that we've been keeping up since then, and she's been on for a very long time, so we appreciate all the community support. Another thing that they will do in eighth grade is we go through a simulation of what it's gonna be like when they get all grown up, and we say, "Your parents love you," but eventually they're gonna want you to move out. And when you're living on your own, how are you going to do that? So, every student gets a job, and they get a paycheck, and they're very excited. They get to pick a place to live. Are they gonna rent? Are they gonna own? All those types of things, and they have to pay for all the stuff that they, you know, now realize that they have. And then I love payday comes, and they realize they get their paycheck, and they go, "Wait a minute. I, you said I was gonna be making a lot more than this," and I say, "Yes," but that was your gross pay. And they realize they've been robbed in the form of taxes. They get, "What? I can't live on this." So, that's where we bring them, and so they get this simulation of kind of what it's gonna be like, so they start to think about, as I go into high school, what do I wanna focus on? Where do I wanna be? And how do I make those choices?
That's our program. We do credit cards and debit cards, too.
Personal, the beginning of personal finance.
All right, so this is our last slide. And I wanted to leave with, you know, what we're thinking about and thinking ahead, what that trajectory might be. Since the Family and Consumer Sciences Curriculum has been, the standards are now more inclusive of CTE, um, that provides opportunities for growth. And there's a natural, I think, as you can see, a natural, uh, bridge between FACS and business, um, you know, from the middle school to the high school. So, we'd like to strengthen that, build on that. The other is perhaps, um, re-establishing FACS at, uh, the high school as a possibility. There are lots of ways students can be successful, and, um, I think, you know, it, that's a possibility. Let's just put it that way. I think it, it, we have some opportunities that we can build on. Reimagining, uh, the FACS curriculum to reflect those new standards, that's coming up. Uh, I think, you know, we have a solid foundation, but now we can, we can grow and build that. And, uh, teaching career and financial management, the CFM, possibly doing that in, um, eighth grade, so that might open up more opportunities also at the high school. So, that's the last slide. But I wanted to, um, offer that, since we have everyone here, if you have questions or you'd like to learn a little bit more about something, now's the time to ask. Or you could email us later. Thank you.
I had a question on the Career Exploration Internships. Could you give us some examples of, do they include, like, going down to the state legislature? Just give us some examples of...
I sure can. So, I've been teaching this class for quite some time, and I have had everything from a student at the Albany Air Traffic Control Tower, where he went into then becoming an air traffic controller, got federal clearance, everything. We have, um, I currently have someone doing, uh, social media marketing with the Hot Yoga Spot. We have veterinary, I mean, it's, if you can imagine the career, oh, one of my highlight ones was, two years ago, I had a student at the Center for Internet Security in East Green Bush, New York, and he was interested in cybersecurity and then went on to pursue that because of his internship, um, with the Center for Internet Security. Yeah. So, anything you could imagine, we would work and do our very best to get them a placement for their internship in the career interest of their choice. And sometimes students elect to do two, where they split. We try and accommodate that as well.
How many students take advantage of your programs?
Such a good question as well. So, not enough, in our opinion. Currently, right now, I have 15, 16 in my section, and equivalent in the spring as well, it will be, hovers around 16 or 17.
You could accommodate more.
Yeah, we certainly could, mm-hmm, with more FTEs.
I run out 150 kids through their internship program a year, and we're gonna make it to 30 this year.
Which, which does...
Shaker.
Oh, Shaker, is that?
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question. Oh, go ahead, Sean.
Now, go ahead.
About the financial literacy piece, and you said that there are the programs where they gain, um, the CTE credits and the college credit. So, the courses that are in those programs, can students who are not in those programs still take those, they can still take those courses?
A hundred percent for high school credit?
Yeah, so like...
It's a student choice whether they wanna take it for college credit or not. So, if they're gonna take it for college credit, they would pay the tuition that is required at the, at the end of the college course. Oh, yeah.
It's open to everybody.
It's open to everybody. Is scheduling ever an issue? Like, if somebody, are there kids who wanna take financial literacy, and then because of scheduling, like, it just doesn't work out, or...
I think that's an issue.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Sean.
Why do you think, um, so I wanna say thank you, 'cause, uh, my role at the Community College, I think this is important stuff in terms of CTE. Why do you think the numbers are so low? Like, what, what's, what's preventing us from sort of being where Shaker is?
I guess maybe there's...
You should go to the mic.
I, I really, I, I don't know exactly why, but I can tell you what students tell us when we talk to them. We only see a fraction, obviously, of the, the number of students who are at the, the school, but, um, students seem to say that they're not necessarily aware that the internship program is an, you know, an offering for them. So, some of it might be an awareness or lack of awareness. Some of it is a scheduling issue. Some of it could be students' commitments to sports or other activities that might limit their, their time to be able to go, um, and do an internship. And some of it might be a student's desire to maybe have a free block as opposed to have to, um, put, you know, effort into a class. So, there's a, there's a bunch of different variables. We would like to increase the student awareness and really drive or push students to do internships or even work experience, because there's a lot of kids who could truly benefit from doing the work experience. Students who already have jobs, who could benefit from having a little bit more opportunity to be coached on some of the softer skills and the interpersonal skills and communication skills that employers are expecting them to have, um, when they go out to the workplace.
Do you feel that you have enough, um, employers to refer individual or students to? And then how do you, and also, how do you generate those leads?
Really, quite frankly, it's a combination of different things, but I would say there's a, a, you know, um, a good, a fair amount of cold calling that we undertake. So, when we have a student who has, uh, is asked us to, um, find them an internship in something that we've never, uh, done an internship in before, we, you know, get on the phone. We, you know, Google it and get on the phone and make lots of phone calls and, you know, reach out to connections, um, reach out to students' parents and things of that sort. So, it's any number of different ways. We also keep a database of all of the contacts that we've made in the past, um, and so we'll reach out to them, um, first. So, it's that, even like going to conferences and the like. So, like I said, that STEAM conference that I went to last week, oh my God, met a lot of really amazing, um, people that really want kids to come out and do these internships and really mentor and help kids learn. So, yeah, it's a lot of different things.
Do you guys ever go to, like, the high school go to the middle school to present on the option? You know how, like, in the middle school goes to element, they go to fifth grade to talk about foreign language? I'm just wondering if you do that in eighth grade?
Funny you should say that, because we just started talking about that, yes. It's a, what we wanna do is have some of our high school students go down to the middle school and talk to them, talk to middle school kids about that type of stuff. There's also the Pathways Fair that's coming up in December, um, where we're gonna have our students talking about, um, those types of things. Yeah.
And just two, I'll just, one thing, I was at a forum today, and it was interesting because we're talking about sometimes how we're trying to connect more with K-12 and connecting students and job opportunities and career exploration. And I gotta say that career exploration is what prevented me from being a doctor, and I would've wasted a lot of time and money trying to do that, so I very much appreciate it. On the student store, the other question I had, too, I made a note here, you know, the students are creating things. Do you have them selling their creations in the store?
Oh, oh, that's one of the things that we are talking about, right? So, so like art students selling some of their stuff. What's nice is this year, we implemented our first point-of-sale system in the store. So, prior to this, we were like your good old-fashioned, you know, cash register from, like, the 1970s. So, this year, we implemented a real point-of-sale system that helps us with, you know, a lot of financial management stuff and inventory management and the like. We also have, um, the opportunity to take that further and do the store online, so we can have a point-of-sale system online. We have to, you know, get set up to do, like, credit cards and things like that if we, when we go to that stage. But that provides us with a lot of opportunities to do things like, you know, marketing some of our student artwork or other things for, um, students on, you know, on our, in our store.
We were thinking about an Etsy-type of setup. But we've also, we've already had a, a little art exhibition in the school store, which is kind of exciting. I wanted to bring up the External Review that might become a committee. Do you wanna talk about that?
Thank you.
So, uh, at, at our External Review Committee Meeting for the CTE Program Approval Process, we had one of our local business, business owners, actually several local business owners, but, um, he, one of them just recently reached out to me to say that he really would like us to, you know, push forward with, um, you know, putting a, a, a Business Advisory Committee together, which is something that you're really supposed to do as part of the CTE Program Approval anyway. So, um, he reached out, and he would really like for us to start getting our, you know, legs under us with regard to that. And so, we started talking, Shannon and I, and, um, we're gonna persist or, you know, move forward with that, and that's another great way to build those networks between the school, um, the community, and our local businesses. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, if we could just save one more second. A couple of you mentioned that you wish that financial literacy was taken advantage of by more students. Twofold, have you met with guidance, um, both on this Career Exploration Program and on the financial literacy, sort of one-on-one to say, you know, "This is really great for kids," but oftentimes, kids really don't know, and it's their guidance counselor that actually, you know, recommends courses and things like that. Has that happened, that you've met with guidance?
Can I jump in just a second? So, one of the things that we're doing this year, which is new, is something called the Pathways Fair, which is going to happen on December 4th. And, um, what, what the purpose of the Pathways Fair is, is to create that awareness for students as to what their options are in terms of, you know, how they can graduate, what courses might they take. So, for example, um, if a student is, let's say, in fine arts, they perhaps might take a business course because in the end, they might, they will be doing a DBA, and they, they need those skills, right? So, I think in the Pathways Fair, during the process of, of creating this fair, the instructional administrators have been meeting with guidance, and, um, I think we're all educating each other about how it works, what's available, and, and teachers are learning as well. So, that is our purpose, is to increase that awareness and, and why somebody might take that as an elective instead of a, an extra study hall. Does that help?
One follow-up question that you probably can't answer, but at, in time, when you get your facts together. How many kids, say, last year, 2018, actually took this personal finance course? I don't need the exact numbers, but...
Last year, I had one section of it, so 28, and I have 26 right now in that, well, in that, we have three. And I have twenty-six right now in that, well, in that, we have three technically financial literacy classes. So, there's Money Skills for Life, Personal Finance, and Introduction to Your Jobs, Your Money, where in each of those classes, financial literacy is addressed. Particular, Personal Finance, the one that's also now available for college and the high school credit, twenty-six.
I think in the states that are now requiring financial literacy, it's more the personal finance course. I think you mentioned, you know, it's rentals, it's life insurance, it's 401Ks, it's all those kinds of things.
Yes.
And I guess I'm just a little sad in that twenty-six kids out of what?
I cry every night, Barbara.
How many in high school?
Okay, I do. Especially when I talk about cosigning, okay, to the kids. So, I feel you, I do, I understand. I wish it was more as well. And it also is, you know, worthwhile saying that it can fulfill the high school graduation requirement for economics, too. So, like, you know, if a student's going into nursing, you can take Personal Finance, and it will fulfill your economics and what you need in order to move on to that career. You know what I mean? Yeah.
Over the course of the year, maybe fifty kids currently?
Yeah, approximately.
Is that because of lack of registration, or just lack of?
Yes, I think what was previously mentioned before are all elements of that.
And also, to add to that, I do agree with, it's just exposure. It's like anything else that you're trying to get out to people. It's like, how do you get it out to it? And when you're dealing with fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-olds who go home and, you know, somebody at home says, "How are you doing?" You're like, "Good, what are you doing?" "I don't know." You know, like, it's really tough to get that out there, like, you know, what's available. And, you know, if you're the eldest kid or the youngest kid, and the parent's never been through it before, they've been through it too many times, they're just like, "I'm done." I was the youngest of four, by the time I got to high school, my parents were like, "Here you go." You know, so, I really think exposure is a big one. And what we talked about on our Professional Development Day is how to, like, again, in any other really, the sales or marketing or business job, how are we gonna capture the information of the students? So, we've come up with a couple of good ideas at this Pathways Fair to get information to the students and say, "Hey, you know what? You have half of an interest in this, or you like the title of this, or you have an interest in one of these topics that we're teaching? Jot down your email, we'll send you more information." You know, give us another, let us know your name, we'll find your email, because we have that information. We can get that to you as well, and just another way to get this out there, because obviously, we fully agree that this is, just like we spoke about up there with this personal finance education, it's a much bigger, broader topic that needs to reach all of the students here. And we feel very strongly and passionately about it. But, yes, definitely capturing that information of the students in the high school and getting the exposure out there to guidance, to the students-
To their parents.
To their teachers, to their parents, to members at home, is a big part of what we need to do and what we're trying to do.
But, as a department, you really haven't had the opportunity to gather the guidance people together and say, well, they can see this on the internet now, but-
Yeah, in the past.
Back after a four-year hiatus, but I know-
We've done presentations to them before, yeah.
Do you ever use social media to get it out there, like Twitter?
We talked about that this year, actually. So, I just said, "I'm back from a four-year hiatus. I was here for five years, and I'm very grateful to be back here once again." And we actually talked about that, because Michelle teaches a social media marketing class. And we know that other, other schools and like sources of strength and whatnot, they're using social media to get it out there. And I know certainly, like, you know, I look, anything for my sons at Linwood, anything I do, I'm looking at the Linwood PTA on Facebook, because that's where it is, you know. Joan's been running a Twitter account for GHS Business for forever. But certainly, I really think on Instagram and Facebook, you're absolutely right, is where we need to be saying with parental permission, or we don't even really have to put pictures, you know, of students' faces, because we wanna be very careful about that. But just putting information about our classes, what we're doing, a field trip that we're on, conferences that we all go to, facts about personal finance education, you know, economics in general, jobs that are out there, careers that are busting up, and work-based learning, internships. You know, the development of kids overall is changing, and how we're interested in how we're learning is always changing as well. So, I do agree, we absolutely have to do that. We talked about that on Professional Development Day.
And when you guys write, like, reestablish facts at the high school, what does that look like? Is that like a continuation?
She's got that one.
Well, you know-
Or Shannon, too. They've been working on that.
Oh, do you have ideas?
Well, so.
We're not sure yet.
Yeah. We're sort of putting our feelings out there with regard to that. But what we're trying to do is provide our students with a little bit more in terms of the life skills component to, you know, helping them to get off successfully to their next stage of life. And it's a gap right now that we believe our students have, is they don't have that opportunity to, you know, develop their life skills in, you know, around some of the family and consumer science topics and-
Life skills and career skills. I mean, that's huge. I also just wanna say that in terms of getting the word out, I think the facts department in the middle school does an amazing job with the Job Shadows, Shadow Program. And I think that's something that we just, we wanna really support, so.
I mean, if you want my really, what I'd really like, I would like a real kitchen at the high school again. That's really what I'd like to start with. Just a kitchen.
It's as night, right? Kids started it.
Someone say it was as night?
Our students.
I appreciate, I, no.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Sean.
No, I was just gonna say, I, you know, after all this, I was sort of like, "What can we do for you?" So, I'm glad there was an ask at the end of it.
We knew that's what you were thinking, so I thought there.
My last question, if we manage to increase, which has been my heartfelt desire for years now, these financial literacy courses, what increase in FTEs would it require? Or would it just be, you know, filling blank spaces, so to speak?
Well, I think, I think we don't know. So, you know, we, I think we have to create the awareness, have students, you know, we need to create that need for the FTEs, for the courses. I think one of our goals and that we've been working on, especially, you know, this year, is that we're talking to each other, high school and middle school, so that we can foster, you know, that understanding about how one leads to the other. And so, hopefully, with that, we'll have more students ask about taking business classes and understand, or taking personal finance, that type of thing. So, we don't, we're not there yet, but it is something that we're working on.
The only reason I ask, you know, we're in the very early stages of budget development, and you as the head of the department could put in a request, and if you think it's justified for a kitchen or FTEs or whatever, and you can dream.
I think Damian especially will tell you that I'm not afraid to ask.
She's not shy.
But I need to make sure that we have a real good, solid plan before we do that. It's a big, big thing. But, thank you. Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One-minute break, so unless you guys wanna stay for the budget presentation as well, no? This is great. I didn't know if people wanna stay for the budget.
And before the infamous disperse.
Yeah, kitchen requests.
Right, right.
All right, next on the agenda, we have a budget outlook presentation. Neil?
Thank you, Seema. Well, we'll keep the budget and finance theme continuing this evening. We allowed them very nicely tonight. Very early in the budget process, as you know, we're only a couple of months into the actual school year with students and a few more months beyond that for a twelve-month cycle. But at this time, we always want to provide a look at some of the factors that we can identify early on in the development of the 2020-21 budget. Not a lot of them, but what we, the information we do have, we do wanna share with you, because it does inform the process going forward. First thing we'd like to start with is our enrollment. And because students are our customers, we need to know how many we have, so we can plan accordingly to make sure that we have the appropriate staffing and resources for them. And this is raw data at this point, we don't look at needs and opportunities, but we do look at how many students we need to serve and what kind of staffing that we would need for them. So, at the elementary level, we're looking at twenty-two hundred and seventy-six students, and it's an increase of forty-one over the current year. By our ability to look at sections with our class-size guidelines at the elementary level, overall, we're looking at a reduction of one section at the elementary level. Our average class size at the elementary is projected to be twenty and a half students. At the middle school, we're looking at having one thousand one hundred and twenty-seven students, an increase of fifty-one. No change in the number of sections, currently at fourteen sections at each grade level, would continue to remain as that. Average class size would be twenty-six and a half students. And then, for the high school, looking at just a minor increase in the number of students, approximately nine. Sections are a little hard to identify with all the offerings at the high school, so we don't have counts for that. Overall, looking at an increase of a hundred and one students. And as you can see, where do we land usually with our enrollment projections? We looked at what we projected for 2019, 20, the forty-eight, ninety-one, and how far off we are off. We were off thirty-five students overall on that number. So, by and large, we're pretty accurate with our enrollment projections, so hopefully, it'll hold true in this case as well. Looking ahead at our projected growth in enrollment over the next ten years, and it is all growth in terms of this slide, looking at pretty consistent growth, what I would consider to be moderate growth, so manageable. In other words, we have a little dip in, two years out, only seven students, but pretty much around fifty students, give or take, in various years going forward. Here's just a graph of the data that was in the chart form. So, looking at K-5, the blue line at the top, which is our largest population of students, you can see we've got a little increase going on for the next few years, and then it'll level off over time. Going to the red line, which is the middle school, seeing a little more aggressive growth early on, and then a leveling off after about five years or so. At the high school, which is in the middle, yellowish line, little decline over the next few years, and then starting to increase, and then accelerating a little bit more ten years out. Couple of the factors that become important early on, and which we do have some early information on, is our property tax cap. And as you know, taxes being capped in New York State, we're looking at a maximum of a two percent increase in tax levy growth or the difference in the average change in the Consumer Price Index over the preceding calendar year, whichever is less. So, through October 2019, the average Consumer Price Index change is 1.7 percent. We've got two more months of CPI information to come. I was able to look up some of those estimates for that. It looks like we're going to end up around 1.8 percent, give or take for this year, and probably tenths of a decimal at that point. So, we're gonna be below the 2 percent, because it's the lesser, the last two years, we've been fortunate. We've been at the maximum of 2 percent. Doesn't look like we're going to get there for this coming year. Try to outline a couple of revenue impacts and expenditure impacts, again, that we know of early on. Foundation aid, we don't know, and that's what the state will tell us at some point. But this is the amount of aid that follows every student. So, it's student-based number of students and how much the state is committed to put toward every student that we have. We are considered to be a wealthy district, so we get very little increase in foundation aid. Last year, at the time the governor released his executive budget proposal, we hit the minimum, which was 0.25 percent increase over the previous year. When the final state budget was settled, we actually received a 0.75 percent increase. To give you an idea what those numbers reflect in terms of our overall budget, at 0.25 percent, it was an increase of thirty-seven thousand. At the 0.75 percent, it went to a hundred and thirteen thousand. But not a lot of additional aid for a school district our size for those students. Couple of other things that we know, because we do have data on this. I'm gonna lump building aid and underneath the debt payment schedules. So, we do have debt that we've borrowed, and that debt does expire at times. And we do have some debt expiring, about nine hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And that was from the middle school addition and renovation project, going back to 2006, when we borrowed those funds. So, as a result of our debt going off, it's coupled with building aid. So, aid we receive on those debt payments. Not only do we lose the expense, but we also lose the aid. So, we're gonna lose six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars on the revenue side, but we're also going to shed nine hundred and sixteen thousand dollars on the expenditure side. We also will be having a debt payment with our upcoming capital project, as that was approved by the voters in May. We're doing the first phase of constructing, construction next summer. We're planning that now, it's safety and security items. We have some options around how we will finance that. We have some cash on hand between fund balance that was appropriated, as well as the capital reserve, so we could pay cash. We could also do some borrowing. We're looking at, right now, what the cash flow would look like, when we would need to have money on hand to pay bills, how much we could pay from what we have on hand, how much we would need to borrow, when that borrowing would need to occur. So, we, I haven't put a number in there yet, but we will have some impact from that. Maybe not even next year in terms of debt payments, but we could have something there. So, I wanted to put it on the list. We would not have any state aid attached to that at this point. That's the result of borrowing, and when that borrowing gets established. We also know a little bit of information about our retirement system costs. We do have early information from both the teacher's retirement system and the employee's retirement system about what those rates might be, and it's based on salaries. So, for the teacher's retirement system, the rate in the current year is 8.86 percent of salaries. The estimate, and this is typical for the teacher's retirement system, to give a range at this point, so it's 9.25 to 10.25 percent. Typically, they work off a full percentage. That gives us some idea of being able to project what those costs might increase by. I've estimated somewhere between three hundred and thirty thousand and seven hundred and seventy thousand, using those two endpoints of the range. Typically, we're going to be closer to the middle when they finally let us know what that rate is early in, or around February. But until then, we'll have to work off our estimates for that purpose. The employee's retirement system is going to be, is holding pretty flat right now, at least in terms of the estimates they've given us. It's only off by a tenth of a percent. So, really, the cost differential I've shown you is really for the teacher's retirement system at this point. So, we've gone through a couple of steps here in the budget development process. On October 29th, we did offer public input for budget development, but that's not the only opportunity we offer for our community to provide us with feedback. So, at any point in the process, from now going forward, if the community has input that they would like to provide in the budget, please share that with us. Coming up on December 10th, we'll be asking the board for their direction for budget development, as we do each year, to give us some guidance in that. And then, also, starting in December and going into January, our administrators, who are on the table to my right, will be developing and presenting budget requests to the district office administrative team as we really start to gear up our budget development process. So, again, if there's any input anybody would want to offer at any point in time- any point in time, you can come to a board meeting, or you can email your comments and feedback to superintendent@gildelandschools.net. And that's the presentation for this evening. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those. Seeing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Neil. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the consent items. We have the minutes from the October 29th meeting, the CPSC and CSC recommendations, personnel action, and the financials. Can I have a motion? Barb, second, Rebecca? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass is eight zero. Okay, next, information, first curriculum and instruction. Damian?
Thank you very much. I have shared with you a piece that was presented by WNYT last week, and the piece featured Gilderlin High School students Alex Matulawics of grade 11 and Sean Cunningham of grade 12, who are doing their part, warning others about the dangers of vaping. They were featured on Channel 13 with Jill Kanapa, and the link is there for you to view at your leisure. But I do want to recognize Mr. Andy Maccott, who does so much work for the board meetings, but his media team, his news broadcasters, they took this on, and I think they really did an amazing job with this piece. So if you haven't watched it yet, please do. They're very proud of it, and they certainly should be very proud of it. It was really, really well done. So I want to congratulate them. And my second item is just an update on the superintendent's conference day, which took place on November 5th. We had a wide variety of professional learning opportunities scheduled and facilitated. Opportunities were provided to all of our employees, including clerical, maintenance, custodians, transportation, food services, teaching assistants, monitors, and of course, our teachers. And some of the highlights of the day, we had Dr. Stacy Williams return to Farnsworth Middle School. She is from Marist College, and she focuses in on culturally responsive practices. And she facilitated a couple of sessions. One of them was managing teacher-student relationships by exploring microaggressions in the classroom. And the second was culturally responsive planning. We also had, at the middle school and the high school, Drs. Gretchen Oliver and Karen Gregory from Clarkson University, Seema. And they focused, they supported many of our teachers who are engaged in co-teaching. And they had a couple of sessions that they facilitated. One was entitled Can Do Statements to Enhance Motivation, Access, and Quality of Language Teaching. There's a formatting issue online here. I don't know if that's on everyone's, but. And then the second was E N, with the E N L department and content area co-teachers. And they focused on strategies that included differentiated assessments and modifying instructional materials. We had CDPHP here to focus on teacher wellness around sleep, stress, and diet. Laura Hodlin, who's from Northern Rivers, presented on trauma and student mental health and de-escalation strategies. Shandom Rasan from U Albany gave a session on makerspaces, called Make Space for Makerspaces. Our own Natalia Lemoine presented various instructional technology skills and applications. And then we had a wide variety of peer-to-peer workshops and collaborations that focused on co-teaching, Equity, e-School Data, which is our new student management system, various technology tips and tricks, differentiation, inquiry-based practices, concussion protocols, and trauma-sensitive instruction. Our elementary math specialist did a fantastic job presenting to our teaching assistants on investigations, which is the new math program, and the role of the teaching assistant. The Capital Area School Development Association, or CASDA, worked with our clerical staff. Their session was entitled You Matter: School Office Professionals Serving Internal and External Customers. So those were some of the highlights from the day.
Thank you, Damian. Any questions? I just have one question about the e-School Data website. Is there, there's not a mobile app for that, or mobile access to that, is there?
There is a mobile app for that, yes.
There is e-School Data, okay. People have asked about it, so I didn't know. So they can download that and use it. Okay, thank you. Next, Dr. Wiles?
Okay, my first item is to recognize our school-related professionals, because today, November 19th, is their day. So we join with schools statewide in acknowledging our school-related professionals. These are our bus drivers, our clerical staff, teaching assistants, nurses, food service staff, aides and monitors, custodians, and maintenance staff, who work side by side each day as partners in the education of our children. Our support staff deserve to be acknowledged for their significant contributions to our district and the students and community we serve. So if you're out there listening, please accept our appreciation and heartfelt thanks for your hard work, knowledge, skill, and commitment to our school district. They make a difference each and every day. And I know across the district, there were snacks, and breakfasts, and lunches, and all kinds of ways to show everyone.
Pins for them.
Stickers and pins. So they do make a difference. We could not run this place without our support staff. So thank you so much for being part of the team. And my next item is kind of a throwback to follow up on Neil's presentation. So at our next regular board meeting, which is December 10th, will be the meeting at which we get feedback from all of you around your budget priorities. And in the past several years, we've tried a variety of tools to help generate and gather and analyze your feedback. So this year, we're going to try something else new. We're going to use a thought exchange with the Board of Education. So tomorrow, in your email, you'll receive a link to a thought exchange. And that is an online, it's also an anonymous tool. And when you click into it, you will be asked two questions as kind of a survey question. One will be about your, the circumstances under which you would recommend challenging the tax cap. These are not new questions. And the second is your thoughts about the use of fund balance. So there are multiple choice, so you can click. If you have questions about that, you can reach out to Neil or to me if you want to get some background on that. Then the exchange itself is a place where you type in your priorities. So for example, if it's, we want a kitchen in the high school, you would type that in. You can enter as many ideas as you wish, but you should do each one as an individual thought. Once you've entered in some thoughts, you have the opportunity to go into the second section. This is all explained when you get it tomorrow, too. Or you can star the thoughts of others. So when Barbara puts in kitchen in the high school, if you love that, you can give that five stars. If you don't, you can skip it or give it one star. You can, the exchange will be open from tomorrow till close of business on December 4th. So you're going to have two weeks, so you don't have to rush. You can go back in 30 times if you want. And so we'll gather your input. We'll see kind of what rises to the top. When we come on the 10th, though, you are absolutely welcome to share your individual thoughts, regardless of where they land in the exchange, but it will be our starting point for some discussion around your priorities. And then you can give us feedback on how it works. Always trying something new. So look for the email tomorrow. It should be one click. You don't have to log in. You should be right there. Thoughts?
Thank you, Dr. Wiles. Next, board president information. We have a set of policies up for information. I'll let Barb lead the discussion on this.
The ones that are just up for information, you'll have an opportunity to look at them. If you have any feedback, you know, just give it to one of us, Ben, Tim, and myself. The number two that you have, the evaluation...
Barb, can I mention something on the other?
Oh, sure.
Homeschooling, specifically, the first policy on your list, a change that we didn't make to the policy, but that we talked about and we have talked about, relates to sort of that paragraph after the bullet points. It says, "The context is what clubs can homeschool children participate in." The line goes, "An example of such participation includes ski club, but excludes theater productions and curricular-related activities..." dot, dot, dot. There was a discussion about allowing students into theater productions, homeschool kids, that is. When we discussed it last year, there wasn't enough support on the committee to change that. And this year, when we discussed it, we were short, remember? So I thought I would just mention it to the wider group. You know, Barb has made the point that these kids are taxpayers, and there might be something worth saying about letting them participate as much as possible in the activities of our schools.
Can you give like an overview of the discussion? I remember talking about it last year, and I know you guys just discussed it at the current policy meeting.
Sure. Ben brought it together quite nicely, I thought. But when you look at the mask productions, it's like 127 kids. There's always room for somebody to be on the set or to, you know, be part of the chorus, or be part of the dance team, or whatever. And my thought, and I think a couple of others, was that as many opportunities as we can open up for children whose parents are taxpayers in the district, you know, the better it is for the children. And basically, we're here for that purpose. So we just wanted to throw it out to the whole board to consider it. And if there's enough support, you know, we can add that as an activity that the children, you know, can do. So...
Do you remember why it wasn't, there was more of a, I guess, debate about it?
The complaint, or, you know, the adverse position was that, well, but what if the child is really talented and he takes the lead from an in-house student? And that was the main thing. It was sort of that balance that, well, but what if? And to me, talent rules, and, you know, if you're good enough to get the lead, to find. Others said that, well, there are other opportunities for kids that have a theatrical interest to, you know, go over to Sage, or go down to the New York Theater Institute, or, you know, other places. But to me, it's not like being with your fellow neighborhood kids and kids that you're probably going to be going to high school with, or even, yeah, probably high school. You know, a lot of the kids, I think, well, Damian can speak to that. Do most, do many kids that homeschool in the lower grades participate in the high school eventually or not?
Next to none. Almost none.
Oh, really? Okay, okay. So that was the counterargument. Does that help?
Yes, thank you. And then you wanted to talk about, anything else under number one?
Let me just comment that I did reach out again to Mr. Maccott and to our new music IA, Bob Linens, and also to Damian, because enrichment is in here as well. From the perspective of the people who lead these programs within the district, they are not supportive of opening them up to homeschool students. Some of the reasons that they brought up were a lot of our extracurricular activities are actually outgrowths of curricular activities, so like our theater program. Those students already have relationships with, you know, individuals who are part of the program, or they take our theater course, or. So there's that piece that may be missing. There was some concern about displacing opportunities for students who are enrolled in the program. And then just the idea that, you know, families have made a choice to remove children from the school setting for all other things. So why would they want to come back to the school setting for these particular kinds of activities? Especially in our region, where there are numerous opportunities for students to participate in musical ensembles and theater activities and so on. So I'm sharing with you the feedback that I heard from our colleagues. Damian, I don't know if you want to jump in here, because this is your world as well.
Well, it's, I think, I'll speak for myself. My concern is that we already operate with limited resources. So if we were to take elementary enrichment, for example, we have two teachers who are scrambling to get to all of our kids across the five elementary schools. It's already very, very challenging. Likewise, when you look at our theater productions at the high school, we have many students who participate, but we have really Mr. Maccott and some volunteers, and there's just not a lot of resource there. And where do we draw the line? I guess, where is the point where we say we're exceeding the capacity that we have from a resource perspective? It is a little concerning, because it seems like there might be, it's hard to pull it back. It's hard to say that, I'm sorry, we can't accommodate more, or we don't have space, or we don't have the resources to be able to do this. At what point do we draw that line? How do we determine that? So I just, I think we see some challenges with it.
This could be like enrichment during the school day?
Well, enrichment is during the school day.
So it would be this, okay.
We weren't even talking about them.
But it's put together, right, in the policy?
It's in there, it's in there.
When you say just...
Separate out whatever you want. Under state regulations, you can say they can do X, Y, and Z, but they can't do that.
Right. But what you guys, I guess, edited or discussed grouping together the theater production and the other, I guess, list there?
That was part of the existing.
Okay.
Policy.
We haven't changed, what you have in front of it doesn't change what students can and cannot participate in. We wanted to bring it to the whole board before we touched that.
I mean, my own opinion is that the theater production piece, I could see someone being talented, but the rest of the piece, I kind of agree with Damian with the number of resources that we have to take in more students that are not in, you know, part of the school community already. I mean, it's not that we'd want to be exclusive, but there's only a certain number of spots. And we already talk about the number of students, you know, that teachers can attend to. But this is my...
Well, I mean, these students have the option to enroll as well, right? In which case, they'd be using all of our resources. So to Barb's point, they're taxpayers, so...
You know, and hearing from other parents that have made decisions to homeschool children that have come here before us, you know, there's sometimes, there's real valid reasons behind it, like a health reason, for example, that's why they're homeschooled. So in a school district where we talk about inclusion being, you know, a fundamental characteristic and value that we hold, why would we not, why would we create something that's exclusionary to the community in terms of this policy? Whereas, we already have, we already have elements in the policy that say that, you know, the first party goes to the student in the school building. And if there is additional capacity, you know, the rest of the students are welcome in. And how does that really conflict with any other limitations that we may have where we say, sorry, our program is full? I mean, that happens. So why would we, and again, I go back to, if we're trying to be an inclusive school community, why exclude?
Judy and then Barb?
I'm just wondering, how many homeschool students do we have?
I think we have about 41 right now, 42.
And that's through all the grades?
Yes, yes.
Do you have the breakdown? How many elementary?
Out of the top of my head, I'd have to go back.
Never. You can fill us in. Thank you.
Do you currently participate in things like ski club?
Very, very few. Very few.
So we're not opening the floodgates. We're really providing an opportunity here. I don't see, if you told me there were 400 students being homeschooled, I might say, whoa. But I think we're talking, you know, 41. We get it wrong, we revisit it.
Was there an increase in homeschool this year?
No. No, it's been, it's been pretty steady over the years. We haven't had really wild fluctuations. You know, Sean's absolutely right. I mean, sometimes it's a health-related matter where a family just determines that, you know, whatever the health condition is, they'd be better suited by being home for the instruction. So there are, you know, many different circumstances that factor into that decision. But I think, generally speaking, my experience has been that they want to take a different approach to the instructional program for their child, or they want to expose them to something different, or a different setting, or different, you know, community opportunities that they want to participate in. But it does, it's a range of reasons why, I would say.
I was just curious with the vaccine change.
Well, the vaccine change just happened this year. I mean, we had a couple of cases that did come in as a result of that. One, I think, backed off and decided to go forward with the vaccinations. But it hasn't been a, you know, huge number.
Again, I see it as a chance to, you know, alleviate concerns, or could be a student who thinks that they can't be in the environment because it's too big of a school. That's a, you know, an issue we've heard before, that a chance to, in some ways, try it out and realize that, yeah, I can be successful here.
So this will be up for action next time, Barb?
No, no, this is, this was just for informational purposes, and then we'll revisit it, you know.
Committee?
Well, at the next meeting.
Okay.
And if anybody wants to provide feedback that... And if anybody wants to provide feedback that you haven't shared already, then, you know, lay it on us and we'll bring it back to you. Okay, the second thing, in our review of the policies, and I sort of alerted most of you, I think I just missed Sean, that we'd be talking a little bit about this, was policy 0310, which was the evaluation of school board operational procedures. And if you notice on the first line, and this is why we didn't send it on to you, it says, "The Board of Education shall review the effectiveness of its internal operations at least once annually." And we obviously have not been following our policy. So, we then engendered a, quite a lengthy discussion. Ben had some phenomenal ideas and he reminded us that on January 26th, we had met for our, sort of like a visioning, beginning.
You mean July?
June. July. Did I say June?
January.
Oh, geez, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, July 26th, I think he said. And that, you know, we had decided to do something about it, but he says, here it is in November and we haven't done anything about it. And maybe this is the perfect opportunity to raise the issue again and say, okay, board, what would we like to do? We could either set a date, say in January, far ahead enough so that we could plan our schedules to the best of our abilities. Or Ben mentioned, if we can't do that, perhaps at each meeting, we can just brainstorm, what do we envision five, 10, 15 years down the road for technology? Just pick topics like homework that we brought up. Ben, you rounded off about five of them there if you want to hop in here and mention these things. But again, so that the discussion at least begins to happen. And the other way, the other thing that Marie mentioned is that she would be more than willing to sort of work on a preliminary strategic plan type of thing that we could then input, you know, onto, so sort of give us the bare bones type of thing. So, we wanted to bring it to all of you because more heads are better than one, that's for sure. And yet, we can't do this policy until we're comfortable that we're going to do it. And so, basically, we're looking for ideas. Would you, as a group, like to pursue this visioning? And, you know, it would be a multi-step procedure, I think, as I envision it, and Ben has great vision, much better than mine, but what I would say, you know, we as a board meet, then perhaps set up a meeting where we can engender the teachers, get their perspective, the community members, or you could do it all in one big gathering session. There are different ways you can do it. But in order to have a visioning or a strategic plan, you really need the input, not just of the board and the staff, but of the community as well. And so, you know, we have this new tool called the Thought Exchange, but you can't just put something like that out and say, well, what do you think about the future? You have to sort of be able to ask some questions and give people some guidance. So, basically, hop in with your ideas because we're dying to hear them.
So, from what I remember, when we met in the summer, we talked about the mission and vision, and then we talked about, I guess, goal-setting being kind of a separate thing. And I don't know if this was discussed in your, the meeting that you had. I thought when we left that meeting that most people were, didn't have a problem, I guess, with the current mission and vision, like they didn't see, there was a big need to change them, but the goals part was something that we talked about. So, I mean, I'm happy and open to come participate in that, but I think we'd have to have, I think, most of the board on, most of the board on board.
Maybe I'll just update where we are with what happened from the summer because we have been doing work. We left, and by we, I'll just say that the leadership team left with not a clear direction of, so what is it that we should do? So, after some discussion, we went back to the whole idea of thinking about our mission and kind of in those two, two bites, the, are we, are we meeting the needs of all kids, that all kids piece, and then are we thinking about the future-ready piece? So, the all kids part, we did a thought exchange with our middle school and high school students at the end of October. And Mike and Mike have been working their way through the thoughts and we're going to be rolling them out, maybe tomorrow, maybe Thursday, with beginning of audiences. Both of those gentlemen did some work going through the responses and putting them into themes, which become the beginning for some action planning. For example, I'll pick on Mike Biscatelli at the high school. We got a lot of feedback, like the most feedback, around e-school data. Kids really don't like it much. They miss school tool. So, one of the things is almost an immediate action is Mike's going to put together a plan for students to tell us exactly what it is that they don't like so that we can respond with whatever it is they need, because we're not going back to school tool. We can't go back. But if there are specific problems, how do we address them? That's not a visionary thing, but that is a response to asking the question, you know, when do you feel valued? The other thing we got an earful about is the condition of the high school. We heard about heat. We heard about sewage issues. We heard about rodents. We heard about leaky roofs. That's a bigger conversation when we think about long-term, what we do with our facilities, especially in the context of a capital project that we just trimmed back and requests that we're getting from our community now to put in a turf field. That's part of a strategic plan, those, that feedback that we got. We also got a lot of other kinds of feedback about connections with teachers and connections with peers and so on that we can use to build on. So, we haven't not done anything with that, but we're, we're kind of building small. We're starting from the ground up. We want to reach out to our faculty. We want to reach out to our parents and build on this whole notion of, so how well are we meeting the needs of all kids? Part A. Part B, are we really preparing them for the future? To what extent are we doing that? How could we do that better? That's what I would envision as the work. Does it rise to the level of a slick strategic plan? No, because it's kind of a homegrown method that we're doing while we're doing other things. But I just want to put all that out there because it's not like we're not thinking about the future or trying to figure out what's the next step, the next best steps for us. So, I'll be quiet now.
Barb, were you also talking about, so, you know, we do this and then to follow the policy, review this on, once annually, so to go back, you know, to what you create and see?
Right. What it basically says and, is that we're supposed to review our internal operations at least once annually, and that involves goal-setting, you know, for its instructional programs. It says, review your relationship with the superintendent. Marie provided us with this school board evaluation tool that NISBA puts out. And there were some categories where I think we shined, but then there were those other categories where, oh, boy, we didn't do so good, you know, just in looking at the thing. And so, it just prompts us to say, you know, we sort of got to get our facts together here and start doing something. Minimally, setting goals, we require a superintendent to set goals for us. The least we can do is, as a board, you know, set two or three goals a year and check on them the following year.
Ben?
So, during this particular committee meeting, I probably talked a little too much, maybe a little too heatedly. And, you know, one of the things I said to Marie was, you know, you're never going to get a strategic plan out of us, you know, like a full, fleshed-out strategic plan. It's probably not going to happen. But what we can do is, you know, make progress, you know. I think a lot of the problem is that we look at this enormous task. Where do we start? What do we do? What steps do we follow? And we don't do anything, you know, and that's why I suggested, all right, if you can't do anything else, at the beginning or at the end of a board meeting, to just talk about a topic about school that's not budgetary, right? Have the school board talk about school. Bring some kids in. Sit down, have a conversation with them, whatever it might be, just so that we're talking actual ideas instead of, instead of just maintaining the school district as it is. You know, one of the things Marie mentioned in that meeting and something that I mentioned back when we were discussing our capital project, is, you know, we just requested $40 million to repair what we have without really asking the question or presenting the vision of, what do we want to have? You know, what do we want? You know, when do we ask that? Of kids, of teachers, of administrators and community members and us? You know, what do we want to build? What do we want this district to become? You know, not what do you want next year, but, you know, what do you need to be successful 20, 30 years from now? Let's start getting ahead of the curveball on that because otherwise, in, you know, 10 years, we're going to ask for another $40 million to repair the same schools in the same way. You know, we're going to have schools from 19, designed for 1950 and it's going to be 2050. And, you know, that's just the physical building, you know? That doesn't even address some of the instructional issues or community issues, cultural issues. You know, so...
So, when you mean like, I know we have the, you know, board sharing ideas at the end, it's open to any topic, but to keep that, but to add like a topic of discussion for that meeting such as whatever you mentioned, Barb?
Well, yeah, so, one of the issues with boards, board issues, ideas and sharing is that, you know, I can come to a meeting and say, let's abolish homework, and no one's really prepared to discuss that, right? Because that's a huge thing. So, the thought that I had was put the topic out earlier, you know, so that, A, one person doesn't define the discussion, right? Because if I throw that out, now the discussion is about, do we abolish homework and the answer's probably going to be no, you know, and what else, what other progress gets done? So, this gives everyone an opportunity to come with an idea and then, you know, if it's not mine, it's okay, but at least we're talking about it, you know, and it actually tells them what we're going to be talking about so that they can think about their ideas. I mean, this isn't, you know, those little 15-minute things, we're not going to get a goal-setting strategy out of that. That's really just to get us all thinking about what we might want to be setting goals about.
Were you thinking in the, in the policy meeting, like you guys coming up with topics? Or you didn't talk about that, just first, all of us needing to see which strategy that we're using?
Well, we had a sort of alternatives. One was finally getting together as a board and just trying to set some goals. Ben had some phenomenal ideas, I mean, things that I never even would have thought of. He says, well, why isn't coding a foreign language? I mean, this is the language that the world is going to be speaking 10, 20 years from now. And he pointed out, well, kids may take four years of French or four years of German, but they, for the most part, don't come out fluent in the language. And if you're going to go to France, you just take your little app and say, you know, where's the nearest grocery store? And it tells you how to say, where's the nearest grocery store? And it's ideas that people, particularly of the younger generation, I think, can articulate far better than those of us who grew up a long time ago. And it's just great to hear that kind of thought processes going on. And I'm sure there are plenty of teachers and our administrators that have fought these kinds of thoughts, but until you get them out there and say, jeez, that does sound like a good idea, you know, it never will happen.
So, you were thinking, so January, you know, meet and try and come up with goals and then we'd be able to use those as like a metric for next year to evaluate? Because the idea is, right, is to evaluate the effectiveness, so we need to have something.
Well, and the other thing too, though, but to start and use that as a starting point. Then, after we've had our little session, expand it now. What staff people would like to sit down either with us or, you know, with the administration, probably it should be with us because we would need to hear their ideas. They're on the front lines. They're here every day. And, you know, what changes would they like to see in their classroom? What have they heard from other districts? Our administrators, they go to all these conferences, they're far better at that than we are. Share, you know, let them share their ideas. So, I think it's sort of a building process, but again, that's why we brought it to the board because I'm sure there are other good ideas out there, but we wanted to at least get the conversation started again.
You know, one of the, one of the ideas that was discussed in that committee meeting was, you know, can't just be our goals, right? It needs to be the community's goals, all the stuff we say at this time to indicate that we represent the community. The problem is that takes forever, right? We, we, I thought we gave instructions to have a school, a thought exchange on the opening day of school. And, you know, at a July meeting, I thought, at the opening ceremony with all the teachers, we were going to send out a thought exchange to all the teachers right there in the audience and on the web. And we'd get this discussion going on defining some of the words in our mission and vision. That's, I thought we, I thought we had next steps. We didn't, apparently. But now, I mean, we have one group, students, almost done four months later, you know? And so, the question becomes, is it going to take five years to come up with defining our own mission? You know, if that's the case, we might as well just give up because by the time we're done, it's going to be irrelevant. You know, so, you know, part of this is coming up with a plan to follow to get all the input that we need. And, you know, my, my suggestion was, Marie, just come up with a plan, right? Tell us what to do. Tell us when to show up, you know, tell us when to hold a meeting, you know? Take that off of us because we're going to waste two hours of any meeting that we have just trying to come up with a plan. You know, and then, you got to execute the plan, you know? And this is where I come off as, you know, callous or something, but, you know, just post the date for the board meeting. Show up if you want to have your feedback, feedback in. Post the date for the community gathering. Have two or whatever, but then show up if you want your voice heard, you know? We have to keep moving, you know? If we're determined to gather every input that we can, we're never going to get through it. And furthermore, no one's, not everyone's going to agree anyway. I mean, at some point, we're just going to have to make a decision anyway. You know, it's 2019. Tweet me if you have ideas about the future of our schools. I'll forward it to all of you. Tweet me. There is absolutely no excuse for not participating in this process if we lay it out and say, this is going to be the process.
I mean, I think to some degree, we put it out there as a district, people, you know, choose when to respond. I'm not saying that we, you know, do enough, but I am happy to meet in January, at least for the goal-setting piece, because that's something I thought, you know, when we left in the summer, that, that we agreed upon, that, you know, forget about the bigger, larger, larger strategic plan and, you know, talking about how the board is constantly changing, right, with different people. So, it's hard to get something done long-term, but to have goals for a year is something that we can do, that we should be able to do.
Goals for a year is one thing, but goals for a year turns into keep working on School Start Time Task Force. And, okay, so...
Well, it has to be something measurable.
One-third of our goals this year, you know, because we give Marie goals every year, you know, one-third of them was keep doing what you're doing, you know?
Yeah, but like, I'm just saying, School Start Time because you gave us an example. We can't rush that. I mean, this is not going to happen. You have to have buy-in, you have to have it out for a while and obviously do the research and I think that's what we've been doing, but the goals have to be measurable. Yes, I agree with that.
I just think that the Board of Education should have bigger, longer-term goals than that. That Marie can run the school. Let's be honest here. Marie and Neil and Damian and Lynn, they can run the school district. We provide the bigger direction, you know? We should be able to say, Marie, School, School Start Time. Boom. Now that's Marie's thing. What is the board doing now? What is the board talking about? I think that has to be more than, what are we going to do this year in the school district? I mean, we can't even make those decisions. When we say, oh, let's do this in the schools, that requires next year's budget process and then, you know, it, whatever we say, it's going to take two years, three years to do anyway. Let's just say, okay, what do we want to look like in 10 years?
Sean?
I think it's, you know...
I think it's, you know, I agree with Ben with Ben that there's a challenge here, is that we don't know where we're going. And so I really appreciated the, the CT discussion and facts, but you know, when we come down to it, if Barbara puts in a kitchen and her budget requests, sorry to keep throwing the kitchen at you. I don't know what that's, what, what objective or what goal that accomplishes. Do I think it's a, a noble thing? And as I said, if, if we had an, you know, a blank check and unlimited purse, would we do everything? Absolutely. But I still don't know when we go through the budget this year, when we start talking about elements of making decisions, what goals we're, we're aligning with.
Barb? I would say if everybody agrees, send out a doodle poll for some dates that step is available. Maybe that first week in January, when hopefully everybody will be fresh and get ready to get back in the saddle, so to speak. Or, or the second week, or if you wanna look at your calendars now. I think until you, you like Ben said, until you set a concrete time, it's not gonna happen.
I think we have to be locked into a room and sort this out.
Yeah.
So, I mean, so, you know, and, and I didn't, I said, I sent something to SEMA and I said, I don't wanna talk about it tonight. But I did send SEMA an email I got from an organization and I'll, we can share it with everybody, I guess. You know, that, that, that does, you know, retreat facilitation for this whole idea. And it doesn't have to be, you know, a high-paid consultant to come and do it. It can be, again, be locked in a room for a day or two and, and figure this all out.
I'll pass that, that on. I mean, that's, Sean and I were saying that it doesn't have to be like that, but there are options out there. And if, I don't know if you can, it's probably important, obviously, that to have the DO at the meeting. So if you could, Marie, send out a doodle poll for early January.
So, you know, one of the points that I'm trying to make here is that there's fifteen of us, right? We can't get everyone here when we post the dates a year ahead of time, you know? Just like, just like for the July meeting, not everyone can show up. You still gotta hold the meeting, you still gotta, you still gotta do, do our job.
Right, but we would like, like to get, you know, as many people here as we can.
Right, let's do the doodle poll, but, you know, you know.
But that's part of shared decision-making, it can't just be, you know, it's, it's just not gonna be fast. I'm not saying that we shouldn't be going faster than we are, I agree with that. But, you know, we can't just, you know, pick a date and just say, oh, if you show up, you show, I mean, we can't do that. I think at least let's just start, let's meet first.
And the purpose of the meeting will be, the goal of the meeting will be what?
We don't have a charter. That's, that's one of the, that's also one of the challenges.
To set up, Barb, as you're saying, to, if we're following the policy, to set up a way to evaluate the board on an annual basis.
That seems to be different though, from what you're saying.
Very different.
Yeah, like this is, what you're saying is very, you know, objective, right? Yours is more subjective, it's larger. Like those are two different agendas.
So what happened was, this policy came up. We requested a sample evaluative tool from NISBA, which clearly showed our main deficiency, which was a lack of vision and goals to review and, and comment upon. So that's, yes, this policy is not what we were just discussing for fifteen minutes.
Because this doesn't include vision and goals. This is just reviewing the effectiveness of our internal operations.
Well, it's the district goals for its instructional programs and its, you know, the district's needs, you know, it discusses.
So did you use that NISBA tool Barb in the meeting to, I don't know, kind of semi-evaluate or?
Right, we looked at it and as I said, there were some categories that, you know, we looked pretty strongly. But this, the visioning and, and goal-setting was way down on the scale.
Okay.
And, you know, that obviously it's something that a, that a board should have. And I know you Gloria invested a lot of time and effort last time around and I don't know if you'd wanna change anything or do anything differently, though. This time, just trying to get the conversation started again.
Well, I sometimes think that we come at it as board, thinking we have to solve it, we have to come up with the answers. And I don't think that's our role. I think we should be facilitating to finding, to bring people into the conversation to allow the, the thing to emerge. So we have to create the climate and the environment. I think we do have excellent mission and vision statements to work from. And if we use those as our guide and then we set up means for people to have conversations because, as you say, the experts in the field, they know what they, what their classrooms need to look like in so many years. And then they inform us so that we can provide the resources necessary for it to happen. So our, our role is to really, to create that conversational environment. So if, if we as a group look at that, like I, I liked what Marie did in terms of that question that went out because one of our, in the envisioning statement, it's all children, all, all kids. So finding out whether we are doing that was really important to enable us to move forward. So we should be using that visions, that vision and goals, uh visioning and mission statement as our, as a kind of our guide for how we move forward. We can use that, we don't have to come up with all the answers, the ABCDs of how to get it done. But I like the idea of finding out where are we at with that? And then, then we can say, okay, we're really off here, like this facilities thing sounds like it's, you know? So then that's, that's how we create our goal for the next year or two. Like we're gonna put our efforts at, whether it's facilities or wherever we identify from, from what we're finding out. Because it sounds like we were pretty comfortable with our vision and mission statements as they're written. They're broad enough, I think, for all of us to feel comfortable with. But where it comes down to is then we feel like we have to figure out what the ABs and the Cs and Ds, and we don't. But we have to create an environment where people say, where we ask people, are you able within your building or within your field to meet that, to create that mission statement, to, to make it real, to make the, the vision come alive? If they say, no, I can't, I'm not doing that, like we're finding out with this, we're not doing that with certain groups of people, then we can, we can set that as a goal. You know, if, if we're not gonna start with that quote strategic plan idea, then this is, you know, a better way of at least, as Ben says, doing something, moving forward. But I don't think us sitting around a table trying to figure out what the issues are is, that's, I don't think that helps because the conversation needs to be more inclusive.
You don't see a, a need for a meeting of, of the board and the administration then?
I could, I could see a meeting, I mean, I, I guess like Marie says, you know, to find, to find the objective of it. The objective is to set out a, a plan of how we're going to involve the different levels and how they're gonna communicate or find out information about how we're doing regarding certain aspects of the mission or the vision. If we're gonna use this route, using the thought exchange or using whatever, having meeting, evening meetings or something. But we could use the meeting to that, to identify those steps we should take to get the conversation, get the information we need to move forward, to make that vision real.
So even though they're, they're two different pieces, right? Putting that together, oops, sorry, putting that together and then the evaluative tool, right? I think that's a starting, they're, they're still connected, even though they're two different things.
Well, the evaluation tool is just a way of just asking yourselves at the end of the year, you know, what did we set out to do? How did we do? You know, that's basically what, you know, we wanna, we wanna be able to say in June. Gee, in September, we said we were gonna do these three things.
Right.
How did we do?
Well, remember, I, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, when, when we even talked about like, oh, with Marie's evaluation, like, oh, can we do a mid-year check? Because it's a long time for, to not do anything. So it'd be a similar thing meeting in January, right? Except that we started from nothing, kind of. I mean, that July thing was just talking about it and everybody agreeing that we wanted to do something, but didn't have any direction. So I guess even using that tool in the January meeting would be to have discussion around how we're going to improve in the sections that you said that we were, you know, not so, not so stellar in.
Actually, we could get this out to everybody.
Yeah.
And you could go over it. And then apparently you know somebody that does this kind of stuff.
Oh, I can forward it on what Sean said and then, you know, we don't have to use that, but I can pass it on and then you guys.
At least if everybody gets, you know, takes a look at this and just see if you agree that we're a little bit deficient.
And it's, I already sent that out, so.
Oh, okay, so maybe we should have that, that's from NISBA?
Yeah.
Before Janu-, I mean, like.
Definitely, definitely.
I can send it from.
Yeah.
Yeah, that way we can come to, and the, you can, the assignment could be coming to that January meeting, having used this evaluative tool, you know, individually.
Right.
About how we were rating ourselves and then kind of see where we are with that, that's a starting point. I mean, we're not gonna have all of the goals done and invite everybody in the district to one meeting and come up with everything.
No, I, I absolutely not, you know, I, I totally agree. You know, I, I ran to represent students, right? And I felt like, no offense to everyone here, you know, but the average age of the board with me on it is over fifty, right? And, and we govern a bunch, you know, five thousand kids. You know, I don't know any more students in the schools, unfortunately. And, and, and that's a big problem for me in, in, in my advocacy. I, I want as much feedback as I possibly can get from the, from the community, from the administrators, the teachers and the students in this process. But, but shared decision-making doesn't mean that everybody makes the decision.
Right, so I'll just give an example, I think the second year I, I was here on the board, I asked, 'cause I know some other school boards have, like a, a high school rep who's on the board. And so they're not, they don't vote, but they at least bring the issues and attention to the board because they're in school. And no one really liked that idea, so, or it was done in the past and it didn't, you know, I guess, didn't wanna do it. So we let it go. But that doesn't mean I don't wanna do it, so we weren't, we, we didn't talk about it then, this was before then. But there, I think there are other people that want that, we just, we need to come together and talk about it.
But that's one of the many things that we should be talking about.
Yeah.
You know, but to, to complete my thought, you know, we, we met in July to set a plan, you know? And, and we're gonna meet in January to set a plan and, and we're, you know, I, I really think a plan, Marie can come up with a plan, and we know the plan, we need some dates for input, we need to, some thought exchanges out there, you know? You know, let Marie come up with the plan, we can provide input and, and then go with that and just go. And, and, you know, I, I just, I really think that, I, I think, I think we're going about it the, the wrong way.
Sean, oh, sorry. Let me just jump in here, we, we have, we have two parallel tracks going here. On the one hand, I could absolutely put in writing kind of a long-term, well, over the course of the year, kind of a plan for multiple exchanges to gather input from various audiences. That's absolutely not hard to do at all. And I'm happy to do that, can bring it to us, bring it to the board on December tenth and maybe on December, we can share the results from the student exchanges as well. So you can get a feel for what's going on in those and we can project into the next little bit of time how we wanna gather more feedback. That's completely separate and apart from what the policy is about, which is regular board self-evaluation. If there's interest in doing that, there are, and I shared the NISBA tool because it was handy, but there are other tools out there. If the board wants to have a, a process for evaluating itself, much like you have one for evaluating me. Here's the tool, here's the timeline, we do a self-evaluation, you gather the results, you talk about the results and take further action. Those are, I think those are two separate tasks. So I'm happy to do A. Do you guys wanna do B?
Yeah, so the January meeting would be using this tool because we're not doing what's in the policy. And we need to figure out a way to start doing that. I, I think using, I'm not saying we have to use a NISBA one, but usually it ends up being a starting point or at least a template to work from. So if, could send that out with the Friday update? Sean?
I think in the planning, the, the challenge is there's no ownership. I mean, one of us has, one of us has to take leadership and, and run with it. I think that as the board president, it's well within your prerogative to establish an ad hoc committee on strategic planning if we need to accomplish. But I think until, until there's ownership on it, until there's somebody who's going to be the champion behind it, we're gonna do, we're, we're just gonna keep doing this.
Let the record show, we had a vision and committee.
We had a strategic planning twice, two years. We've been here, we've been.
So who owns it? Who's the chair of that committee?
I was the chair over two years. We worked on it, communications committee worked on it, we came back with a strategic plan twice. And nobody wanted to put the effort in, the money in, the resources to accomplish it. And then we were told it wasn't our job anyway, but the board had given us the job. So it died. So to say the truth, it's, it's hard to get excited after all those years and hours that we, we put into that and then be told at the end, well, no, we really can't. So it's, it's tough right now. And it's absolutely, I think, necessary. I mean, we don't have to do it on a grand scale, I agree. Nobody wants to, money's not, you know, coming down from the sky. But the plan was there, I mean, the, the steps needed to do it and that you move along. Like Ben said, you get stuck, you know, you get stuck and then you don't, but if, if you have the plan laid out, where are you gonna go, what are you gonna do next, what are you gonna do? And we had that all done.
We need to bring it back, the board, you know, the board changes every year.
Yeah, I, I know.
So I think we're all in agreement that we can't do all of these at once. Marie can do the one part and we can at least start with the evaluative tool because we really started this discussion about not following the policy. So we should at least start there. So I think we can get that NISBA tool and all of us use it to evaluate ourselves. And all of these discussion points that you're bringing up are things that you can be mentioning in that. So, you know, talk about strategic planning, et cetera. Does that sound good?
One thing that I'd like to check and maybe Marie can check, as you fill this out, is there a way that it can be consolidated so that when we go into this meeting, we know, you know, how many people felt that we conducted a mid-year formative performance assessment? You know?
We know the answer to that.
Well, yeah, but I'm saying.
The stuff that are obvious.
Right, but I don't know if NISBA provides that or not.
If we do it on our own, just bring it to the meeting, we could easily, quickly.
Yeah, alright.
Go through them, I mean, that's, I don't think that's.
I know it's super eval, I mean, well, obviously it costs money, but Super Eval has a board evaluation that I'm sure looks exactly like that, 'cause that looks exactly like Marie's.
We're gonna find out that, we're going to come to the conclusion that we're not doing this and we don't have a process in place for evaluating. So I think we know what the answer's gonna be.
But at least we do a self-evaluation that this thing requires.
At least we can look at the parts and, you know, obviously Barb, Barb already looked at that.
Oh, yeah.
And the goal-setting one was one that we were lacking in, so that's where the discussion starts. You know, and I don't think we all looked at that together, so that's a starting point.
And I like the idea of, Marie, you're saying like over the course of the, the coming year, you can use the thought exchange to go out to the community, go out to the staff. And, I mean, you got some surprises from the kids, so you may get some surprises from, from those areas. And that wouldn't require them coming out at, leaving their families for a meeting at night or whatever and.
People don't come out to meetings anymore.
Right.
Learned that a few years back.
But it's, it's twenty nineteen, you know? You can tweet me in real time, I will see it and reach out to the rest of the board. You know, like, you know, and I suggested, you know, for, for board input, you know, our board hearing, you know, that, that we put that on, all the notices that we sent out, you know? Hi, this is a message on Facebook, come to our board meeting or drop a comment, you know? We'll, we'll take a look, you know, we, we want your feedback, yeah.
Which is a hundred percent increase from last year.
Listen, the more, you know, the more we use it, the more people know it's there.
Yeah, I'm in agreement that you can always, we can always do more. I just think also that, from, from what I've seen in my time, that the district has been asking for input from the community and lots of times it doesn't come until it's something that they really want or there's, you know, a need for something or there's something negative. But yeah, we can do a better job for sure, getting input from the community.
In the notice for this meeting, we're apparently going to do this evaluation. We should also list that maybe we'll discuss goal-setting because like, like Barb said.
Well, it's tied to it, yeah.
You're gonna go through this real quick and you're gonna see where we need to be talking about things, so.
And that's one of the categories, right? So I'm, we'll all agree that that's not, we're not doing good and then we'll start that discussion there with the goal-setting.
Okay. See you guys next month.
Other policies, Barb?
Um, those are just sort of self-explanatory. Then, you know, we do have a, a few when it comes to the action items that people looked at last time around.
Nothing else under number one?
No.
For our discussion? Okay. Thank you. So we'll get a doodle poll then for January?
A doodle poll and a copy of a NISBA evaluation.
Okay, thank you. Next, action items. Neil?
Okay, thank you, Neil. First item this evening is some additional federal IDEA flow-through funds agreements. Carlton School, New England Center for Children, St. Anne's Institute and St. Catherine's Center for Children.
Can I have a motion for the federal IDA flow funds? Gloria?
Second.
Tim? Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes eight zero.
Next is a resolution to approve the inter-municipal agreement with South County Central School District about transportation services for Gildonlin students.
Can I have a motion for the inter-municipal agreement? Judy?
Second.
Rebecca? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes eight zero.
Next is a resolution to approve the attached list of items that are declared as surplus or obsolete.
A motion for the declaration of surplus obsolete property. Barb?
Second.
Ben? Any questions, comments? All in favor? Aye, passes eight zero.
And then finally this evening is a resolution to accept the 2019, 2020 delinquent tax rolls for the towns of Gildonlin, Bethlehem and Max in New Scotland. That totals $1,792,931.67. Those uncollected taxes go to Albany County, who will attempt to collect them. Even if they do not collect them, or that they do or they don't, we will be made whole in the spring after they complete this process. So we will receive the full amount of our tax levy. But there's a step in there for the county to try to recover those taxes before that occurs.
Can I have a resolution to accept the delinquent tax rolls? Judy?
Second.
Gloria? Any questions?
Is that a huge, that sounds like an awful lot of money. Is that bigger this year than usual?
Um, the percentage, and we gave you the percentages here, is a little bit less than last year in terms of the amount of uncollected. But it has been hovering right around anywhere from 97.5% to 97.9%. So we've been pretty consistent in terms of.
And that's how much we collect and then this is.
We've collected and how much remains uncollected. So we, we do get the vast majority of our tax money. But given that our tax levy.
Okay, I'm just wondering because of all the people with their questions and.
With the reevaluation.
Yeah, but they, they pay it. But, I mean, they pay.
Yes.
Anyway, okay. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes eight zero. Next, Dr. Wiles?
I have one item with three parts. We have three co-curricular club requests, all from Farnsworth Middle School. We have Alexander's Crochet Club, the Environmental Club and the Dutchman Soccer Club.
Can I have a motion to accept the co-curricular clubs? Gloria?
Second.
Barb? Any questions or comments? Ben?
What does Alexander's mean?
I think it's just.
A type of crochet?
I have no idea.
It's one of the student's names.
Oh, I thought.
You named a co-curricular club after a student?
It's one of the students who's involved in wanting to get the club name.
Right, but is it going to be listed in, it's listed in our agenda as Alexander's Crochet Club? Is that the name of the club going on paperwork and stuff?
It is listed like that. We could talk to Alexander and see if that's his act.
I think it's kind of nice.
Yeah.
All right.
I guess he started the club because he hated it.
Brings your attention to it.
Own it, man.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes eight zero. Next, under Board President, an impartial hearing officer appointment. I'll just read this. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Gildonlin Central School District approves the appointment of Aaron Turetsky for a special education impartial hearing pursuant to the board's compensation policy and pursuant to the regulations of the Commissioner of, of New York State Ed. Can I have a motion to accept the impartial hearing officer appointment? Tim?
Second.
Gloria? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes eight zero. Next, we have a set of policies, A through J. Can I have a motion to accept the policies? Ben? Questions or Barb, you want to?
Oh, I'm just seconding.
Oh, sorry, seconding. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Tim?
Oh, I thought you were.
Oh, no, Barb, I got Barb. Ben?
If I could draw attention to policy four, five, three, three, additional high school course options. You know, the, the, the main change that we, we put here was to, at the end of the first paragraph, school counselors are encouraged to notify students these opportunities. You know, there's a course fair on, on December 4th at the high school. And I, I spoke with Mike briefly about this, you know. You know, maybe there's a way to incorporate the alternative to courses as well into that day. You know, these types of options will probably be pursued a lot of times by, you know, our more advanced students. And those two, those students kind of fall into two buckets, right? The outside the box thinkers and the very much inside the box thinkers. And I don't know that these, these options are publicized enough. So I'm glad that they're available. But as someone who, you know, gained the system as much as I thought was possible, I went to read this policy and I was like, darn, I missed out. So, so I just, I hope that we really do commit to, you know, sharing these options with the students.
That's the, the path of this policy, right, that they, that the group presented tonight?
Yeah, they called it the pathways fair, I heard.
They said they'll be there.
Okay. Yeah. So, just throwing that out there.
Other questions or comments? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes eight zero. Next, board committee reports. Start with business practices?
We haven't had a meeting since our last meeting. And our next meeting is December 18th at 4:00.
At the district office. Did audit meet yet?
We're going to meet tomorrow, 8:15 a.m. at Farnsworth Middle School though, which is a departure for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Neil and I are hoping that we don't meet in the parking lot of.
We're meeting again on December 18th at 8:00 a.m.
And communications?
Our next meeting is Tuesday, November 26th at 8:00 a.m. at Pine Bush Elementary.
Do we have another public comment, Lynda? Nope, okay. Board issues, ideas and sharing? Sean?
I just had a follow-up question on the neighbors, I think it was in the Pine Bush catchment area with the school bus stops. Did that get resolved? I suggested that the neighbors present a solution.
Um, we, they were not able to get consensus from their other neighbors to move the stop. That was a requirement in order for us to consider that. They first reached out to ask if we could guarantee that we would put a stop there at their house next year. And indicated that that's not possible. We need to look at all factors every year in terms of making those bus stop decisions. They did ask for a copy of the policy, which was provided to them and I've not heard from them since that time.
Well, thank you for trying to work with them. I thought that was a, a fair solution, but, you know, they couldn't figure it out. That's.
Couldn't get consensus.
Better luck next time, yeah.
Within their own community to.
Well, thank you, thank you.
A better way to solve it, to ask them to, for them to find out.
It's the best way to sometimes solve problems is, is ask people to develop the solution.
Gloria?
Last night I got to go to the FMS PTA. Mike, I'm going to ask you, because I gave the sheet to Sean. There's a couple of programs that are coming up that they're doing that board members might like to come to. One of them is the Dr. Brian Friedenberg.
Friedenberg. You want the sheet back?
It's going to be 3:30 to 4:30. It's a staff meeting, but board member, it's not a, oh, that's the PTA, the evening meeting, 6:30.
So.
You might get it wrong.
Yeah, Mr.?
So our PTA surveyed parents and they're trying to start some of the PTA meetings a half hour earlier with a presenter or a focus. We partnered with GPD earlier in the year to do something on vaping. They were looking to do something on anxiety and school avoidance in adolescents. We got some names from some of our social workers and school counselors. And we reached out to a gentleman in private practice in the community. He's actually going to come to our January PTA meeting. We're going to start at 6:30. It's January 13th, off the top of my head.
Yep.
They moved it to the evening. It was originally scheduled for a morning, but because they have this presenter, they moved it to the evening in the hopes that we're going to get some people to come. The other event that we have going on in support of our cabinet goals, we're bringing on our faculty meeting on Wednesday, December 4th. We're bringing John Robinson to present to our staff. John Robinson is a gentleman who owns Ability Inc., which is a company based out of Bethlehem, which provides career opportunities for people of all abilities and, and all, all lifestyles. So he speaks motivational speaker and he speaks about perseverance, resilience, despite the challenges that he's had. He was born without any limbs. So it's in support of our cabinet goals. So as a board, you're certainly welcome to come. It's during our regularly scheduled December faculty meeting from 3:30 to 4:30.
If you haven't heard John Robinson speak in the region, he's tremendous in the message that he has to send. So I've heard him a couple of times.
And I think the PTA helps to bring him back.
And I, yeah, and I'd like to thank our FMS PTA because they've been very gracious to, after we do the staff presentation, they've provided some additional funding to bring him back for some student assemblies as well. So we're pretty excited to do that in the spring.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Ben?
Could I have Mike Laster come up and, no, I'm sorry, Mike Piscatelli. Sorry, Mike. And explain No Place for Hate?
So last week, we launched the No Place for Hate program, which it's really, it falls right in line with everything we're doing about culturally responsive, inclusion and everything. We're basically about, it's, it's a focus about just like, kind of like, it falls right in line with our National Coalition Building Institute that we've been doing for years. It's just a very public program that proclaims and gets everybody to buy into that this is the building that accepts all differences. And we believe that the differences that students are bringing and staff are bringing to the building is a strength of the building. That's really the gist of the program. So on, I think it was last Thursday, forgive me if I'm off a little bit on the date, the students signed a resolution of respect, which basically outlines six different ideals that they, they would agree to abide by. I don't have them exactly off the top of my head, but, but they, again, it's about being an active ally in all situations. It's about respecting differences in people and along those lines. The next phase of us, for us to get approved, because we have to get approved to be a No Place for Hate school, is we have to present at least three activities that we're doing throughout the year to promote, you know, diversity and so forth. And we're actually way, we're already well along on that. We started, we just had today our second training for understanding program, which with that, what we're doing with that is we're bringing students in. It's all about culturally being, we're basically being receptive of different cultures. And we're bringing in 40 to 50 students at a time and we're running them through a two-hour program. And we're doing, we're trying to do it seven times this year. So every five weeks, we're doing it. So we did one in the middle of October. We just did one today. We'll do one at the midterm, the interim period of the second quarter. And we're going to keep doing that throughout the year. So that's one of the activities. Obviously, we're still doing NCBI. We are also, we're including the Mix It Up lunch that we're doing through STAR that's going to be in a couple of weeks. And we have another activity that we're doing through our counseling department that we're submitting. So all of these activities are getting submitted to the Anti-Defamation League. That's where the No Place for Hate program is out of. So hopefully by the end of the year, we will get approved and we become a No Place for Hate school. So, and we'll continue all these initiatives. So.
Nice. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sean?
I don't know. Will we have, I, I just wanted to recognize the outstanding season some of our sports teams had. Will we see any of those student athletes in?
Next month, we have the field hockey team will be here.
Awesome. Thank you.
Ben?
On Friday, December 6th, I and 20 other school board members will be having lunch with Chancellor Rosa of the New York State Board of Regents. The discussion will be mainly around the graduation requirement changes that the state is currently contemplating. But, you know, there's going to be room to stray into other topics like the search for new commissioner and, and things like that. So if anyone has any thoughts that they'd like for me to bring, please reach out.
December 6th, you said, right?
December 6th.
Anything else? We don't need a motion, right, to go into executive session?
We are all done with the executive session.
Okay. So a motion to end the meeting? Adjourn?
Adjourn.
Wow. This is weird.
Hands one quick.
Sean? Second, Judy? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes eight zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I don't think I've ever said that.
Thank you very much. You're right, because I think.
Every time. Yes, yeah.
Before everybody leaves, I need to have you sign.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't do my resignation.
Free taxes.
Yeah, I was.
Two copies, you can sign them both.
I, I never see much of them.